I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report on closed session agenda items. The board took no action on any item during the closed session. We didn't finish one thing, so we can reconvene in closed session at 9:00 this evening. The next thing on the agenda is correspondence, and there's a lot of correspondence. I don't plan to read each of the pieces of correspondence. There's one from CSBA that notifies us that if we want to nominate someone to be a CSBA representative, that we have to do it by January 7th. And if any board member or any member of the public wants us to nominate someone, we should make that an agenda item at the December meeting. The rest of the correspondence is all about high school options, and it's nine different emails that we received prior to the date when we closed the input for correspondence. Approval of the minutes.
Wait, Bill. I have some questions on correspondence.
You have some questions? Okay.
First of all, I asked last month for the CTA letter that they read at the September 27th meeting to be in this board packet. It's in the minutes of October 11th, and I still don't see CTA's letter in correspondence. I have several questions, so should we just do them one at a time?
Sure.
So there's that one. When are we going to have CTA's letter in the packet?
So that evening when they did the public comment, you and I had a discussion later about, I don't even remember receiving anything written from them regarding their public comments. So we went back and checked with the CTA representative, and she said that what she started to hand me that night, which is, I think, what you're referring to, was her request to speak, and then she turned and handed it to you instead. So there, I confirmed with the CTA representative that it was just an oral comment and that they do not intend to submit anything in writing. So I never received anything in writing.
Okay. And then the letter, the second one, the top, it says, I think it's the second in the packet, it's after the CSBA one. It's forward letter to Scott. It's from Ron from his home account. So this letter from Lila Coleman was sent to Ron's personal email and then forwarded to Superintendent Smith and included as official correspondence. So if this is treated as school business, why not email he sent from personally, not considered district business in regards to the public records request? In our board bylaw, which we just approved August 9th of 2017, Board Bylaw 9012, Board Member Electronic Communication says, "To the extent possible, electronic communications regarding any district-related business shall be transmitted through a district-provided device or account. When any such communication is transmitted through a board member's personal device or account, he/she shall copy the communication to a district electronic storage device for easy retrieval." And additionally, on October 12th, 2016, we had an agenda item titled Creating Email Accounts for the District, and it clearly states, "School emails indicate an established relationship with school and emails." So how come other, where is this repository that we're supposed to send it to, and why is, if Member Wilson is saying that his other emails aren't subject to the Public Records Act, why is this email from his personal email in our official correspondence?
I'm not sure if that's a question or a statement, but I would-
It is a question. Why isn't it allowed?
...that I've turned over the public records request to our attorney and am not willing to address it in public.
Okay, well-
Our attorney is working on the public records request.
Okay, so according to Board Bylaw 9012, it clearly states, "If any such communication transmitted through a board member's personal device or account, he/she shall copy the communication to a district electronic storage device for easy retrieval." We did this October 2017. It seems like these board bylaws, who are created by CSBA, which has been in existence for a long time, we keep changing them. It's, I don't think there's a problem with our bylaws. It's a problem with how they're not being followed. Do we have this electronic storage device for easy retrieval as we said we would in October of this year?
Anytime an email is forwarded to a district email, it automatically gets stored as an electronic document. So that bylaw would, I would assume, is forwarding of that to me. And at that point, it would be stored electronically.
So any such communication should be forwarded to you. What's the definition of district business?
That is the key question when it comes to public records requests. There are varying legal opinions out there on what is considered district business, and so you have to take them, one public records request at a time, and turn it over to the attorneys and have them dissect what is district business and what is not district business.
Okay, so-
That's why public records requests get quite expensive.
The next one was titled Scare Tactic by School Board Trustee, from Rocky Delamas to a group of, a whole mess of people and us. Was there ever a district response to that email?
Just your response to that email?
Yeah, she copied all of us. I was just curious if there was ever any response. I know I didn't personally, because I thought there would be a district one, but, okay, so there wasn't.
No, I did not respond to that email.
Okay. Okay, then going down to the bottom of her email, she attaches that email and question from Member Wilson. Then if you look at Board Bylaw 9010 on public statements, it says, "When speaking to community groups, members of the public, or the media, individual board members should recognize their statements may be perceived as reflecting the views and positions of the board. Board members have a responsibility to identify personal viewpoints as such and not the viewpoints of the board." So this whole email, when he signs it, Ron Wilson, CAIC's board trustee, and leaves a school email and a sample of how to tell stakeholders to respond, if he's signing it as himself, as a trustee, that doesn't seem okay. Additionally, Board Bylaw 9200, Limits of Board Member Authority, states, "Board members understand that their actions and communications can be perceived to be on behalf of the board. As such, individual board members understand the importance of reinforcing to the public that their role and power with respect to the district is as a member of the board, not in an individual capacity." There's a bunch of other stuff, but it goes on. "Individual board members may not pursue contractual business relationships, negotiate transactions or relationships, or convey board positions without prior authority given by the board. Individual board members may not, on behalf of the district or school, contact individuals, organizations, or community organizations where an active business agreement with a school or district exists, where where an interest in pursuing new business agreements is being considered without the advance approval of the superintendent of the board. Individual board members may not commit district or school to any policy act or position." So he's telling people how to respond. That's almost telling them how, how does that work with board member authority? I just don't see how that fits in there.
Are you asking me how it fits in?
Yeah. How does it follow that policy?
There, this board's policies.
Yeah, the ones I just-
This board can modify their policies.
But I'm talking about the policy that-
Individuals can choose to follow or not follow their policies. We're elected officials, and that's pretty much the extent of it.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, as elected officials, you're giving us permission to not follow policies because we're elected officials?
I'm saying, I'm not giving anyone permission for anything. I'm saying that I am not the board policy police when it comes to enforcing board policy on board members.
Who is?
That is the board's purview, not my purview.
Okay, so I'm going to request an agenda item later on, how we're going to, what we're going to do about board policies not being followed.
Okay, good. Well, I want to point out that Agenda Item 8.7 is some specific suggested guidelines on things that should be used for board member communication. And it's a guideline that we haven't had in the past. Right. My role is to provide feedback, to provide consult, to provide advice to any board member that seeks it regarding an agenda role and how they should play their role. Carrie?
I have no more questions on correspondence.
Okay. The next item on the agenda are the minutes from the special board meeting of September 27th, 2017. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. We've been moved and seconded that we accept these minutes. Is there any discussion of that?
I like them. I like the more detail on it. I'll say that.
Okay. Hearing none more comments, then would, Hannah, would you call the roll, please?
Call the roll.
Call the vote.
For a vote.
Call the vote. Yeah.
Okay, Member Brownout.
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Member Bren?
Aye.
Member Truitt?
Aye. Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is the minutes for the regular board meeting of October 11th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Member Brownout has moved, Member Wright has seconded approval of these minutes. Is there a discussion about these minutes? Hearing none. Hannah, will you call the vote, please?
Member Wilson?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Member Bren?
Aye.
President Truitt?
Aye.
Member Brownout?
Aye.
Thank you.
Bless you.
The next thing on the agenda is a time for public comment. As, as those of you attend regularly know, the board welcomes comments on matters of district interest. There are also additional public comment periods during every agenda item, should we wish to address the board.
Could you have one?
It's this board's policy not to engage in discussion or take action on items not listed on the agenda. So Carrie, do you have some requests to speak?
For items not on the agenda, we have one. Trish?
My name's Trish Wilson, and I teach middle school physical education, and I'm the athletic director here. And I just would like to let the board know how important it has been and is to consider class sizes in this school and all schools. The research doesn't support 100% academic progress and success with small class sizes, but as a teacher of almost 30 years, I cannot tell you how valuable it is to have small classes in the social, behavioral aspect of the classes. Being a physical education teacher, we're not on, I would say, on the continuum, we're not way on the academic end of it. And in my classes, I focus a lot on social, emotional, and behavioral. And the difference this year compared to last year, the eighth grader, sixth grader, which is our ASC president's class, last year we had 34 students in that one class. And in P E in particular, I have one regulation basketball court for 34 students, one regulation volleyball court for 34 students. This year it's lifted to 18 and 17. And the time that I can devote to the students as far as checking in with them, being able to just separate them individually, it's been a phenomenal change. And so I just really, I know one of the edicts and tenets of CAIC is to maintain those small classes. And when I was hired five years ago, it was because Carrie's daughter in her class was at 32, and they felt like that was too big, and they were going to 16, so they hired me to come on as an extra teacher. And I just really, really thank you for following that principle and maintaining that from the classroom teachers' perspective. It makes a huge difference. So thank you, and please keep that in mind individually.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak during the open comment section? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is approval/denial of inter-district transfers. There are no inter-district transfers considered this month, so we'll move on to presentations. And the first presentation is from the Associated Student Body.
Oh, sorry. Let me turn my timer off. Yay, Charlie! I mean, I planned that.
I'm Charlie Meneh, I'm the ASC president and one of the president representatives. And I came here to give a brief overview of what we are planning to do of the next following months of this year. In December, we are doing the holiday, the holiday sweater day, where students get to wear the holiday sweaters to school. And on the December 22nd, we are doing Roll Out Bed Day, which is where students get to wear pajamas to school.
Can teachers?
And teachers.
Nice.
And Red Red Week was a very big success. We had a lot of activities that promoted anti-bullying and anti-viral use. And I felt like it was really educational and a lot of fun for most of the students.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a report from the PTA. Is there a PTA representative here?
I can speak for people.
Bye, Charlie.
The carnival, the carnival was a huge success every year. It gets better and better. I got to emcee the cake walk this year, which was really fun. I don't, I don't think any mighty totals have come in yet as to what they've received, but really well attended, incredible amount of volunteerism, lots of students, people who weren't even at the school, community members came. And they take it over the whole campus, which is really nice. Years ago, it was just on the blacktop. Now it's over in the cafeteria. They provide lunch. They're, I won a longboard skateboard from the chicken block contest.
You got it, huh?
It was a very successful and nice community event.
Thank you, Trish. Next item on the agenda is a report from the safety.
We had a health and safety meeting this last month. Nessa Garcia is our head health and safety gal. She runs around making sure that we, you know, are doing what we need to do, making sure that the cords are put away like they're supposed to be, so we're not tripping over them, or any cracked cords, or, you know, we're letting them know so we can replace all those. So she really keeps us on top of that, which is really nice. She's also in charge of our health curriculum that's going on. So she and Abby from the cafeteria are going to all the elementary schools and presenting once a month to each of those K through fifth grade classes. Couple of things that are on the plate right now, we have a grant that we need to decide what we would like to spend that on. So one of the largest things is the east-facing windows on the library and Hannah's window right here facing the sun, especially in the morning until early afternoon, gets hit by the sun pretty directly, and it gets pretty hot. And even the black borders of the windows are really hot to the touch. So we're looking at some ways to decrease the heat that's coming into the, into the library and to the speech and intervention room at the far end, and Hannah's face, because it's kind of distracting. So that's kind of a big project that we're looking at. And then also some stand-up additions to the desks, Nessa's desk, and then also our research classroom. Those are kind of big items. And then we continue to work on campus items, cracks. We've noticed some cracks popping up. We're just general movement, looking to fill those in, and just keeping them, keeping us safe around here. We continue doing the incentive program. Teachers are taking the monthly tests on certain subjects. We have three winners each week. I think Trish was a winner this last month, if I'm not mistaken.
Safety?
Weren't you a winner this last month?
No.
Oh, darn it. But that's always fun, a little competition there. So it's really fun. So we really appreciate Nessa heading that up and really keeping us going. Thank you.
What is, what's room 28B? It says 28B needs to have an extension cord with more outlets purchased. Wouldn't it be better just to fix the electric? I mean, what is 28B?
I think that's the end room?
Yeah, that's right, at the very end of the hallway, room for math.
Math room. So there's other projectors or computers.
Right, so I mean, I mean, extension cords are tripping hazards with more outlets, and then you're going to trip things. I mean, wouldn't it be better use of funds to fix the electricity and outlets in that room?
I think they're looking at the best way to do that. The head of the site committee, the county site, is going around the campus with her, looking at the best ways to fix some things.
Okay, any further questions? Just one more comment. We also had, we've been having a leak in record boys restroom over here, and so we were concerned about the possibility of, when we fix that leak, the possibility of that old floor underneath the current floor possibly containing asbestos. So we have had site come out and test it, and they've sent it to the lab, and we're waiting results. So we're not going to open and do any work on that project until we make sure that there's no asbestos anywhere in there. So at this point, it's, we have one urinal that's out of repair, but we're not going to break into any of that material until we get it all tested and make sure that it's safe to work on. And so we're in that process and coordinating with site on that. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report from the CTA. Does anyone have a CTA report?
We're meeting.
I'm sorry?
We meet.
We meet?
That's, yeah.
Okay. And then the, the next item on the agenda is a review of the Brown Act. And we, this applies more to the board, and we had hoped to schedule a special meeting with a workshop where we could have explored this in depth. We were not able to schedule this meeting, and some of the items that are on here are important for the understanding as a board, the next level of things beyond the basic ideas in the Brown Act. So I put together some things. Almost all of this, except for the narrative, is taken directly from the Brown Act or from the Attorney General's pamphlet describing and interpreting the Brown Act. So let's go to the next slide. Hannah, please. So it's, what are the limits on board communication outside of board meeting? And this year, we've had two instances where board member communications may have been appropriate. In one instance, two members distributed material via email to the entire board. I was one of those members.
And number two?
And the material that was distributed is in public domain. It's not easily accessible. There was no commentary, discussion, or suggestion of action associated with the distribution of the material. And I'm not aware of any further discussion between board members about the materials, nonetheless, it doesn't comply. We, I have learned since then, it doesn't comply with the limits of the Brown Act on board discussions outside of board meeting. Next slide, please, Hannah. In the second instance, a board member distributed a request to all board members and asked that they make their preference known to the superintendent without making their preference known to other board members. So consensus should be reached.
I would like to add, because that's me, I want to say, I was asking board members to let Scott know their thoughts on filming and videoing meetings. In the email, I specifically asked them to email Scott directly, and I said to avoid a Brown Act violation. So I apologize if I did that and that that was reaching a consensus, but that's what it was. I was asking, hey, if you want this filmed, let him know, because we were trying to schedule a slow co. So I apologize. That won't happen again.
Well, but I, I think none of us knew exactly what, we need to know the guidelines, so that-
I know, I'm just, it says a board member. I'm just owning up to the fact that it was me.
Okay.
And apologizing for it.
So the objective today is to talk about processes the board can use for dissemination of information outside board meetings. And all the materials from these slides are either taken from the Brown Act, or here's the reference to the Attorney General's pamphlet on the Brown Act. And notice, the pamphlet was done in 2003, and it's still the most current interpretive reference for the Brown Act. And one, one thing that I learned certainly is the definition of a meeting in the Brown Act, and it's any congregation of a majority of members of a legislative body at the same time and location, including talk conference, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or to take action on any item within purview of the legislative body. And I think we all know that we weren't allowed to get together. Certainly, a majority of us is not allowed to get together, and that we cannot take action outside of a board meeting where there's a published agenda. But when you look at the definition of deliberate, deliberate includes the collective acquisition and exchange of facts preliminary to an ultimate decision. So it means that we can't do what I did, distribute a piece of information to people because just the fact that that's been distributed, it makes it collective acquisition and exchange of facts, and we can't do that.
So can, are we allowed to ask questions along the way?
Sure.
So also, you talked about deliberate or take action, but also I think an important word there is hear. So, so we can't hear, discuss, we can't hear a discussion on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So I would like to, I'm unclear, and I would like clarification, how the advisory council, I attended last week, where I was the voted representative from this board to present, to ask the advisory council to send letters of support to Senator Manning, how is that not a meeting when three members heard items, again, within the subject matter juris, can't, I'm getting tongue-tied. We heard items within the subject matter jurisdiction of our legislative body. How is that not considered a meeting?
Um, that's a good question. And I think if, there is language further on that talks a little bit about that circumstance, and...
No, the, the language later on talks about a meeting that's not within jurisdiction. For example, if the sewer, when the sewer was having all their meetings about whether we wanted to play with more obey or not, all of us as board members could go and listen to that. That's another gathering. That doesn't have jurisdiction of our legislative body. Our school board is not voting on the sewer. But as I was the school board representative, voted by all of you to go do that. So if there was three of us, you, me, member Wilson, if we're all there hearing my presentation that I was voted on, how is that not considered a meeting because a quorum is hearing subject matter jurisdiction of our legislative body?
Okay, I see that. I acknowledge your question. Let me make this suggestion. Later in the presentation, we'll read a specific paragraph that I think deals with that circumstance. And then if we still aren't clear on this, we'll ask Scott to get a legal opinion to clarify particular issues. Does that make sense?
Sure, that seems pretty straightforward, okay.
Okay. Um, then, take action is a collective decision of, of the majority of the members, or a collective commitment or promise, so that, to make a decision or an actual vote. And again, you can't, just doing those things would mean it constitutes a meeting. If it's not agendized, then it's not an appropriate meeting. Um, the, so the majority of things that are talked about and discussed, the easiest way to have an inappropriate meeting is to have a serial meeting, and then an employer official of an agency engages in separate conversations or communications outside a meeting with the members in order to answer questions and provide information.
Hold on. Hannah, can you go forward one more? He's reading off the next slide. So I was trying to follow, I'm sorry, Terry.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sorry.
Provide information regarding a matter within the jurisdiction if that person, so this is an employee or official, may engage in separate communications, not a board member. And that's okay, as long as the staff person doesn't communicate to members of the legislative body the comments or position of any other member or members. So Scott can talk to each of us about anything that's within the purview of the, of the board, as long as he doesn't communicate any member's position to another member. And, and one of the things that you, next slide, please, Hannah. So the easiest kind of serial meeting is that member one talks with member two, then member two talks with member three, and then member three could talk to member four. This is an example for a seven-person board. We only have a five-person board. So if there are three people who talk one after the other on a particular item that's within the purview of the board, then that becomes a serial meeting, and, and that is not allowed. However, a, a staff person can distribute information to everyone, as long as there isn't any information that talks about the positions of other board members. And then you can have questions and answers with the staff person, as long as the staff member doesn't communicate the comments or positions of other members. You, you cannot have an email meeting in which somebody sends something out. In, in this case, a staff person sends out information to all the board members, that's fine. But if board member one, in this case, replies to all and sends information to each of the other board members, then that constitutes a discussion and a sharing of a position. So that's prohibited.
So wouldn't that be the same as even if you're just reading? Hannah, can you put that up a tiny bit more? Says even if members two to seven are just reading their email, that seems that would be the same thing as hearing at a meeting.
Right, I think this is hearing by email.
Right, so my point, going back to the other one, hearing at the advisory council meeting would have been a Brown Act.
Uh, okay.
I, I, you said that, I'm just going back, okay.
Okay. Um, the next thing is a, a description of what is not a meeting. And the first item is individual contacts or conversations between a member of the legislative body and any other person. So any board member can talk with anybody else who's not a board member, and that's always fine. Attent, again, not a meeting, attendance of a majority of members at a conference or similar gathering, open to the public, discussion, discussing issues of general concern to the public or agencies, provided members do not discuss among themselves other than as part of the meeting business of a specific nature that is within the jurisdiction of a local agency. And this is something that I quoted, saying that with my understanding that having three board members at a gathering open to the public, which, the, this is CCAC, it was a general discussion in issues of general concern to the public, and members were, in this case, the three members that were there were sitting in different parts of the room, there was no discussion among themselves. But because an item of a specific nature that is within the jurisdiction of the local agency was discussed, then my reading of this paragraph, the Brown Act says specifically that that's okay. But I, I think it's worth following up on your point.
Well, my point is, Caycus Elementary School District asked, CCAC, for those of you that, that knows the Caycus Citizens Advisory Council, the district asked the CCAC to support a decision that we voted on, and that's not a general concern. We asked, President Carcel for this, was at our meeting, we asked to be on the agenda. So it is a matter within the subject jurisdiction. It wasn't general, it wasn't like Carcel just, oh, I'm gonna put the, put the school on the agenda. He wouldn't until we asked. So my reading of that, discussing issues of general concern, this was not a general concern. We asked to be on the agenda. We were agendized, so it then becomes subject matter jurisdiction because we asked for it. It's not just randomly something coming up, like a stakeholder going to that meeting saying, hey, what's going on up at the school? Un, unannounced, unexpected. This was on the agenda because we, as a school district, asked them to. And that's what I discussed at the meeting. And then you read this paragraph, which I disagree now that it was okay, and I disagreed then that it was okay, because it's clear here, it's not an issue of general concern, it was specific subject matter.
Well, I, I disagree with you.
That's fine.
Again, this will be part two of the clarification. When it says, a majority of members at a conference or similar gathering open to the public, CCAC is certainly open to the public. CCAC discusses items of general concern to the public or agencies, and that's okay, provided members do not discuss among themselves, and we didn't, we were in different parts of the room, other than as a part of the meeting, business of a specific nature that is within the jurisdiction of the local agency. When we got to that agenda item, that's part of the meeting business, it was on the agenda, and, and I think it was fine.
But going back to what is a meeting on that one slide, meeting, if we're hearing, deliberate, or taking action on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction, that's where you and I are conflicting.
Okay.
We asked to be there.
Someone asked for clarification.
It just seems a waste of staff money when it seems clear there. Excuse me? What?
I'm sorry. Well, if two of us have different opinions, it's not clear.
No, I'm just, there's mumbling over there, that is not very nice, and so I just don't appreciate it.
And then a statement by the Attorney General that his office does not think of the prohibition against serial meetings would prevent an executive officer from planning upcoming meetings by discussing time, dates, and placement of matters on the agenda. So when we're trying to schedule a special meeting, we use, uh, the, what's his name, during the blank?
Doodle.
Doodle?
Yeah.
Yeah, to schedule a meeting, so that people can vote and express their opinion, and that's only related to times and dates. So this says that that discussion is okay. And then, uh, again, the, the further definition of meetings, the Brown Act has limited the meetings among majority of the members when the subject relates to local agency business. It does not apply to independent conduct of individual decision-makers. It does not apply to social ceremonial education and other gatherings, as long as the majority of the members cannot discuss things related to their local business. So we can go out for dinner together when we choose. Any more questions? Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is board member reports.
So they have a speaker request on this. Carrie, did you mean eight point one or eight point seven on here?
Eight point seven, I said it was about seven.
No, it just, it doesn't go all the way down, so I just didn't know if you were speaking on board member. Okay, so I'll put you down later. Okay. I'm sorry, Terry, to interrupt you, I wasn't sure what that one was.
Um, board members who'd like, either board members who'd like to make a report.
I will, nobody else did, I will. Ready to write this down?
Just the carnival was a lot of fun.
It was.
Well done.
And I can hear something.
What's that?
I beat Liz up in the spinal column.
You did?
I did.
Did they do?
The shoes stood very well.
I too went to the carnival. And my wife and I also went to the cowplop segment.
Chicken plopp.
And, or, you had the chicken plopp.
Turn your mouth.
Oh, darn, I hate this. I'm way louder than this thing could be. And we won a metal detector.
Ooh.
Yeah, keep laughing, because that board was really important to me, but evidently the metal detector was, was important to my wife. And I also went to the Secret Garden. Very well done. Extremely impressive to see students memorize that many lines and then perform with them. If, if you don't, if you've never read the Secret Garden, it's very, very involved. It's, it's not an easy play to do. And to do it three days and, and be successful, I applaud our, our students. They really did a great job.
Carrie, did you say?
Yes. Uh, one thing we need to look out for in the coming near future is the California Voting Rights Act. Looks like we had the PE minutes threat before about frivolous lawsuits for not having PE minutes. California Voting Rights Act is targeting school boards that don't have area seats. We don't have, like, San Luis Coastal has area seats, Coast doesn't, but when demographic studies have been done, we don't really have pockets of different demographics. But there's a group out there that's targeting boards that don't have area seats. So we need to be watching that. They're hitting it hot and heavy. December 12th is San Luis Coastal's next, not next meeting. That's when their blue ribbon committee, that we've talked about at different board meetings, they're having their blue ribbon committee report. It's December 12th, I forget what time, but I believe that meeting's at the district office. And lastly, I did want to report on the meeting at the CCAC. I was voted as a, as the representative to ask the advisory council to send letters of support to Senator Manning's office to consider the legislative request submitted by Carrie McDonald. I already have mentioned this several times, I was disappointed that a quorum of board members was present to hear subject matter within our jurisdiction. In any case, after I presented, ultimately, the request was tabled by the advisory council, so council members could talk to their constituents. Member Wilson said he was speaking as an individual, but then continued to say we, which I can only infer, infer as the district. Member Wilson commented on how property taxes would increase, despite that being unknown. Our own consultant, Tom Griffin, referred to his own estimates as, quote, fuzzy map. Greg Betancourt, who's a CCAC member, made two interesting comments. First, at the beginning, after I spoke, before there was any comment, Greg, Greg said, he just wanted to clarify that our district was, all we were asking was for the advisory council to support a decision already made by the, by us. John Carcel, the president, agreed, yes, that's all that were being asked. And then at the end, after trustee Wilson's comments, Greg Betancourt said it was curious how the district was asking for support for a decision already made by the district, and a board member was talking against it. So it was still coming across the presentation as a board member, not as an individual. That's it.
Okay. Um, I too enjoyed the, the carnival. I enjoyed the, the Secret Garden. And can I repeat something you said that night, Val? Val, you may not know, but Val, among other things, is a haty worse, is that he is a drama instructor at Laguna Middle School.
I get that right? You got it.
And his comment was, I never tried that whole thing in my school.
Really?
So, and I was just sitting there, listening to people and saying, line after line after line, virtually flub-free. It was, it was dramatic in and of itself, so I thoroughly enjoyed it. Congratulations to everybody who participated in putting that on. And thanks.
We'll pass that on.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, the superintendent's report.
So Hannah's gonna pull up my report. There's, um, we're opening negotiation sessions with CTA. Appreciate their collaborative attitude during negotiations, and so we'll continue working that. We, on top of the things that are up there, which most of them, people read for themselves, they, a couple verbal things I want to add to it that recently came in are, that's, just got news from SmartWatts. They are hoping to start the solar project Monday. I hope to actually see it happen on Monday. It's been a long time coming, and I think it's a good project. It's, uh, been a long time coming and, but I think it's a good project and so I'm excited about that getting going. I was just looking at our PG bills and our warrants and it can hopefully save us significant money, um, for the long future. Also, students today, uh, participated in the Falcon Award Trip. So the middle school students had an opportunity to go on a reward trip for, um, doing well all first trimester. That's both academically and behaviorally. So, um, those students had a successful reward trip today and everything else is pretty much up there.
Where'd they go?
They went to the bowling alley.
Bowling?
National Bowling Alley. Had a good time. Um, that's about it for me. Any questions?
Yeah, on the number eight up there was really surprising to me. Um, eight, eight eighth graders said that they may like to go to Coast Union next year. Surprising only because we have four spanning four grades there right now. Um, just curious, have you contacted the parents of those eight females to ask what the families think rather than just kids? I'm a devious kid. I would've said I wanted to go if I got a day out to go look at Coast Union.
All of those parents signed a permission slip to go visit Coast Union and they completed that visits, was it just yesterday, the day before yesterday?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, thank you. And so, yeah, all those parents knew and are aware of it. And the students had a fabulous time up there and came back very excited. I believe, is it two of them are, are sure things going up there? The other six are unknowns, but I thought it was interesting. This just spontaneously happened from students. So there is still some interest in Coast Union, um, out there.
Nice. I just.
Okay, any further questions? We'll move on to the next agenda item, the LCAP update. And Liz, are you gonna present that?
Yep, yes, sir. And this is the agenda from last month. Maybe we had another meeting yesterday, but that wouldn't be on there. But, um, we're discussing school site activities. So, um, we've talked about the GoBund here at the meetings a little bit. We were talking about the upcoming school events, as you see. And we've talked a lot about assessments and how we're trying to streamline that and making sure that some of our assessments aren't, we're not overdoing our assessment time in classes. So, um, some of our benchmarks, we're able to use the MAPS scores as our benchmarks because we do that three times a year instead of having separate benchmarks and MAPS scores and practice testing and practice testing, um, along with our fluency, et cetera, et cetera. So we're trying to, um, kind of make sure that we are streamlining some of that information so it's not quite so, um, tasking on the kids too. So, um, there's a lot of ideas that we've kind of threw out about that as well. But Lisa Jensen, our intervention and, um, testing director, um, is really doing a nice job on getting that all scheduled out so everybody's aware of when that's happening. So it's much more clear this year, so that's nice. We talked about the first LCAP or part of first LCAP goal in our LCAP and maintaining and, and increasing our levels of proficiency across, um, across all the grades. So we did a lot of discussion about that and what's best for our kids and, and how to best do that. We've, we do have a brand new, um, ELA program. I know that we've talked about that before all across K, all the way through eight. We've had some PD early in the year for K five, um, six, eight. Our language arts teacher just went and she's really excited about being able to incorporate that, um, program into her language arts program. So that's, that's really fun. And it comes, it assesses their reading, right as they're working. So it's really nice to be able to pick information out of nonfiction, answering questions, doing writing, you know, picking up the facts, non-facts, opinions. So it's really been a nice, nice addition, I think. And they got to choose that, so they're, they're happy with it, I believe. So we're really working hard to, um, increase our, our proficiencies in all across the board. This last meeting, we talked a little bit about, um, our STEAM curriculum and how to increase that. So we talked about, um, a lot of cross, in order to get all the information in with all the common core and the new, and all the new wonders and the new math programs, how to get all that NGSS, it needs to be cross curriculum instruction. So it's not, we can't possibly do, I'm gonna do math for an hour, science for an hour, social studies, we don't have that much time. So being able to, um, incorporate all the different subject areas. So we talked a little bit about that and some of the ideas that, that were, that were consistent. They've been really good meetings, actually.
Good.
We'll have some more information. Next, we're gonna talk a little bit about second goal, about, um, more about the NGSS standards and getting them started. We've got a lot of STEAM programs that Jake, our librarian, um, is hosting one about once a month that the elementary teachers sign up for and come into either the cafeteria or into the louvre. This last month, she was in the library and it was dark and she covered it all up, which we worked for windows, the black paper. But it's like, um, but it was kind of fun. So they're doing the senses this next, uh, next week. They're gonna be talking about the senses. She's done a fabulous job on getting the, the younger grades in on the NGSS standards and bringing them into the STEAM program. She also does the middle school STEAM program where they're building flying kites. Um, they're doing architecture, so it's a lot, a lot of good, a lot of great things going.
Yeah, I appreciate, um, Liz's work on organizing those LCAP meetings and we have a lot of them to make sure that we're open to input. Um, that's why this is on the public agenda, um, monthly, which most districts don't do. Also, Liz and I are attending the community of practice meetings to, um, are at SLOCO being run by one of the assistant superintendents at the county level, um, to help us make sure that, um, not only are we in compliance, but, um, we're meeting the spirit of the law to provide opportunities for people to bring input on the LCAP. So thanks, Liz, for that update.
Very well. Okay, thank you. High school options. This is a new item on the agenda and as long as I'm president, it's gonna be a standing item on the agenda. The purpose of the meeting is twofold, of, of the item is twofold. Well, the purpose of it is clear. It's to encourage communications and collaboration between the various parties who are involved in the high school options project. You, if you want to make a presentation about high school options, this is where it will be. If someone signs up to make a presentation, that has the benefit that we can then discuss your presentation. If you just want to make a public comment, then as with all our other public comments, there won't be any discussion on it. We will listen respectfully, but there won't be any public comments, uh, won't be any action taken as a result of it or discussion of it. And so I think in this first one, Superintendent Smith, you have a, a staff comment to make here?
Yep. So, um, a couple of things, uh, to support the resolution that the board adopted in, moving forward. I have engaged both neighboring superintendents regarding the possibility of MOU. Those discussions are ongoing and so, um, we'll see if they can go anywhere. I've also, um, touch base, just got a report back from Jacqueline Moore, uh, from Ochoa and Moore, um, that she has, um, made contact with Senator Mottin's office, um, asking him whether or not, um, he will, um, be putting forward, um, the proposed legislative changes. Has not received a reply from them yet, so I believe they're still considering it. Also, she has been in touch with the education committee to, um, to see if it reaches that committee, um, how she can help them, um, and collaborate with them on supporting it. And I think that's particularly important because if it is picked up by Senator Mottin or someone else, um, it will go to that committee. So it's best if it's not a surprise when it arrives. Also, um, has begun to identify other possible legislators who may be interested in picking up the legislation in case Mr. Mottin decides not to. So kind of just covering the bases, but, um, doing basically preliminary work still at this point on it. Then the other thing is, um, I sent an email to the Small School Districts Association, inquiring with them on, um, whether or not this is something that they, they would consider to support the legislative, um, bits. And played phone tag with Debbie Pearson. I believe she's, um, I can't remember her title. Um, anyway, uh, was able to finally connect with her, um, today. And so, um, at this point, I've introduced her to the topic. She's, um, gonna be, um, looking at the information, keeping her eyes open and, um, talking to her people about it. And, um, so her and I will be connecting, um, once she has an opportunity to consult with other people in the Small School Districts Association. And so I'll continue contacts with her. And that's pretty much it.
So I assume that if we took any further action with SSBA, that we would do it as we have done other things. We bring an agenda item to the board, asking us to endorse it and send it to the SSBA as an official document from CBSD. Is that correct? I'd be happy to follow up in that manner.
But we're a member, so was that necessary?
Is.
We're a member of SSDA, so we know.
Okay, I think the question was, um, does the board want to discuss it and, um, approve some sort of a official request to SSBA before I make any request? Was that the intent of your, your comment?
I think that would carry more weight if the board endorses that request, just as it did with, with other things to go to, uh, the request to Senator Mottin's office. Sure, I can do that. So let me keep talking to them and if they're open to something, then I will bring something back to the board.
Well, I would like to discuss that a little bit more because they're, we're a member of them. So if we're asking for help because we're a small district, they're aware of this before because they were involved in it when Rancho Santa Fe wanted to redo their number. So it's not a surprise, but if we're asking, if we're a member of this group, like, that's just like when, if we want something from CSBA, we're just, you have the authority to do that because we're a member of this group and we've already voted on the legislation. One of three options, that's one of the ones that we said we'd report or support. I don't see why the need to wait a whole nother month and wait for a board request to go to SSDA when we've already, in a sense, approved that in the resolution when we wanted to follow all three. I just don't see it's necessary and time efficient to wait. Other input? For, so Susan, we're, SSDA is a small school district association and their, uh, motto or goal or vision is to help small school districts because we have a lot of different issues, concerns than larger districts. So they look out for the little guys. So I just, my point is if we're already a member and we've already voted to support one of these options, I don't see why we would need to come back to us. Almost, to me, that's almost like you're sure.
So are you saying that the SSDA is already fully aware of, of our concerns?
No, not fully aware, but I, I believe.
So they aren't, they aren't, they aren't going to respond right away either, are they?
I don't know, but I have faith in my superintendent that he can give that information without coming back to us again. I mean, Scott is, I just, I think that's part of Scott's job, but I think we should just kind of let him do that without having to come back to us again.
I see.
Mr. Wilson, you've been most actively involved in SSBA on behalf of CSD. Do you have any comments?
Well, one of the things, just, just a heads up is, um, Coast is also a member of SSDA.
Can you put on your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. Coast is also a member of SSDA and so, um, they're gonna, they're gonna need specific information and, uh, maybe Scott is, you know, can go ahead with that. But I think, um, from dealing with them for a long time is they, uh, don't get involved. They don't get in between two small school districts. Because everybody's a dues paying member. They're looking, their focus is promoting the interest of all small school districts. And so anyway, that's just a bit of information.
I would just, I would just say let them tell us that then. Why would we assume that? Why would we say, oh, they're not going to? My point is we just would let Scott give that information and ask for help and let SSDA be the ones to tell us what they're, what they may or may not do instead of us interpreting. And I believe Scott can do that.
The only thing I, and I'm not a hundred percent clear on what you're wanting, the one thing I, I feel like I would like to hear more about what is happening on the legislative because I know you kind of have championed that one or you seem like you're championing that. We are all voting for that as well, like, but I would like to hear, like, what is advancing and what progress we are making. So him just doing something between the two of you.
It has nothing to do between me.
No, no.
I'm saying with him talking, I don't feel a need, if he wants to talk to SSDA, I don't feel the need to have, say, hold on, SSDA, I need to talk to my board first.
Okay.
I think if SSDA calls him and asks him a question, I think Terry's asking for us to vote again, oh yeah, and then go talk to SSDA. I feel like we've already done that by doing the resolution.
Okay.
And because we're a member, I feel that Scott can be more efficient with his use of time.
Right.
Because this isn't a K eight issue anyways.
Right.
But instead of having to stop and, okay, now I've got to do a resolution and talk to my board again, let him do his job.
Right.
I don't feel like he should be boxed into that.
So maybe I'm, I'm just, I just want to be more aware because I feel like things are happening and then all of a sudden, do you know what I mean?
Well, that's the intent of having this agenda item so that we have an opportunity
To hear what's happening, like for all of the things that's happening.
Yeah, all three.
Yeah.
And I hope there will be no surprises because we, we want to work together coinvertibly and collegiately.
Yeah.
And communication is the key to that.
Yeah, I agree.
So what do we think, do we, are we gonna?
Well, anything to consolidate is time. I'm for, so that's consolidating your time, Scott.
I don't think that, you know, I've already opened a discussion with her.
I would like to say just keep on. I mean, you're not gonna make any decision without informing us, but for you to ask us what you can talk about, I think is undermining what you, what we hired you for.
I don't think that was exactly what I said. If that's the way it came across, it wasn't. What I intended, uh, what I'm saying is if, if we want to make the strongest possible presentation to SSDA and do the best that we can do to get them advocating for something that's important to us, I think a board resolution is an effective way of doing that.
We already have one.
So what you're saying is that the board is, is supporting our superintendent and being able to be informed. Is that what you're saying, Terry?
Yeah, as, as a minimum, certainly, that's what we're gonna do.
And I see, I see nothing wrong with that. In other words, it, it seems like a more unifying effort rather than one person going out and then the concern I would have is, is that there would be feedback that would be negative after we've said, go ahead and represent us. I'd like to see us all on the same, the same level.
Thank you. And Carrie, in, in answer to your, uh, suggestion, we did pass a resolution that said we'll pursue all three of these. we did pass a resolution that said we'll pursue all three of these things. We also passed two separate motions to send to Senator Manning, specifically saying that we were supporting these so that Senator Manning knew we were supporting them. And I don't think this is different.
Okay, we can agree or disagree.
We'll wait for Scott's feedback and then we'll decide if we need to take further action.
Yeah, and there's nothing wrong with me getting a little feedback from them also on what would carry the most weight.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
We have three public comments.
Anything else? I'm sorry, is there a public comment on eight point four?
We have three.
Okay.
Robert Budd, Carrie McDonald, and Eric Endersby.
I just want to address a couple of issues. So, one, there was a piece of correspondence regarding high schools. Well, there's several of them that bothered me. But one of them seemed to suggest that maybe it wasn't really for the board and the community to decide where high school people go to. That people who live here, who moved here, do where the school district were and should apply by that. Well, I don't really agree with that because I feel that the students and their families really voted on this issue. They voted on this issue by requesting their district transfers. It may have worked out well for students to go to Coast. That decision, the boundary lines were drawn so long ago that before Morro Bay High School was even there. Maybe it made sense then, but it doesn't now. And so, I feel that the students and their families are really the constituents that we need to advocate for. I do believe it's within purview of this board to get involved in it on behalf of those students. So, I would ask you to not follow that type of advice, but actually go ahead with the three different directions that the board voted on. But it's really the obligation of the community and this board to do the best for the students and the families. The families now, the families in the future. The other thing that bothers me is it seems like, within these three options, we seem to see them as being contending options. I saw them as presented to the board, and the board thought it was three possibilities that we go and look at. But there seems to be fighting between, you know, this option or that option. Undermining or even trying to sabotage one option as opposed to the other. And I really think, I'm really disappointed in that. I'm disappointed in that, seeing that going on. I feel it's really important that this issue get resolved. And if there's a bunch of infighting and undermining of the board, eventually, everybody's gonna get just fed up with the entire, entire of it. So, I would hope that you go ahead with the positives. Let all three flourish and see where they go instead of trying to stop any particular direction and see if we can't get a follow-up resolved out. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, who's next?
Carrie. And then Eric.
Hi, Carrie McDonald. I originally came up, I was gonna say something because I was curious whether there was anything listed under this option since we've spent so many hours and days and hours and all your time on high school options. And there wasn't anything posted. So, people didn't appear today, come, they would have no idea if there was anything going on under high school options. So, I would appreciate if there were updates maybe on the agenda. It's nice to hear that there was something that was being done. I'm quite curious, as Jacqueline Moore did state that she's been in touch with Manning's office since the case manager, Manning's office, says yesterday morning, had a, I had a reminder with Choyan Longberg. He was not familiar with them. And Terry, I appreciate you asking for due diligence and best efforts of this board. And after several requests to Superintendent Smith, I did ask him to contact SSDA. I tried to do it on my own back in, several months ago. They never responded, I guess because I'm not a member. I'm just a person who wrote the legislation. And Scott finally did, excuse me, Superintendent Smith finally did send me and supported the email to SSDA. I am, I was very disappointed. I'd like to read it out loud at the time. Hi, Deborah, one of our parents, that's me, guys, has submitted legislation to Senator Manning's office to change ed code. So, number one, it would allow a K-8 component district to change its top feeder pattern and point at a new unified district and to change the area election for the aforementioned reorganization. They want our K-8 district to change from feeding to Coast Unified School District to sound like Coast Unified School District. I have been told that since our district and Coast Unified are both part of the SSDA, that SSDA would not be willing to endorse legislation that one of their districts supports and another one of their districts does not. Is this true or is there a possibility that SSDA would support a change to reorganization ed code that allow a K-8 component district change who it feeds into for high school? Thanks, Scott. The ed codes are not referenced. I am not referenced. My name is Oliver, and I led bulk of those legislation proposals. I think that's important if you're going to be calling to Senator Manning's office to find out. And also, the ed codes should be referenced. And the reason is, so 35756.5 is specifically one of the ed codes that SSDA advocated on behalf of Rancho Santa Fe against every other small district in my affected. So, when you're concerned about, oh, maybe Coast will be offended or they won't do it. No, they didn't care before. They're gonna do it whoever asks and to see if it works the best for the state. There's seventy-five component districts who could affect, not just us. SSDA, we all, okay, we're members, I think they are too. And I've been told by those other districts to please contact SSDA. And I think if you're going to contact them, you should do it a little more officially with ed codes, my name is, and that is clearly supported. Thank you.
Thank you. If that's the level of teamwork that we're gonna get out of this community, none of this is ever gonna go anywhere.
Scott, that's your level of community. That's, that's it with that.
Okay. As an opening, as an opening, we do not, when we talk about this, I think that's absolutely appropriate. So, we're just of different opinions. Thank you. Eric.
Hi, Eric, good to be here. Eric, resident. It's been clear to me since the beginning of this process that any fix to this ice watch problem is gonna be a monumental, cohesive, harmonious, hopefully, effort from all of us, including the board, the district, the community, the CCAC. Lots of different folks, all pulling in the same direction. And I thank the board for hearing me. You guys have done so far, it's great. But we got a long way to go. This board voted to support the proposed legislation that was discussed here, which simply gives us more tools in the toolbox. It doesn't commit us to a path. It doesn't obligate us, it doesn't mandate us to do anything. It gives us some more options in the toolbox. And it doesn't preclude other options. It provides some other options that we can potentially pursue. Well, everybody has a right to their own opinion. One member of this board is chosen to pursue what I consider a reckless path. They'll bend for one option and torpedo efforts for other options. And it's really threatening to destroy the fabric of this process. We need to work together here, folks, not against each other, not behind each other's backs. And that's starting to happen. Particularly with these committee members, there's certain of us that are getting ready to throw in the towel and just say, you know, we're done. We've gotta be working together on this process. And it ain't happening. There's infighting and it's starting to involve an unhealthy process. We need to correct that path, get back on, all pulling in the same direction. We're not going down for anyone off there now. Pursuing three, let's get all the information up. And there's a lot of information, misinformation starting to happen. A lot of the members of this committee, official, unofficial, whatever we are, are about ready to begin that because it's getting ugly and it's not good.
Thank you. Any more public comments?
I don't, I don't have a feeling about it.
That's okay.
What's coming? I just wonder, Mr. Wilson, what is your agenda? Like, why are you so forcefully wanting this high school option? You know, it doesn't, it doesn't seem what the community wants. It's obvious what needed to be transferred to Morro Bay. And to follow this path of all three options and what would be best for everyone and fair for San Luis Coastal to receive some of the funds from these kids, great. These kids wanna go to Coast next year, great. Let them have that money for those eight kids. But give Morro Bay the money that they deserve for our children that are going there. It's a relatively priority for most of them. So, I'm just wondering, what is, what is it that drives you to want to force for a high school here in Cayuga?
Oh, wait.
Oh, is this not a question?
We don't have dialogues during the public comments.
That's fine, I'm not politically...
Sorry. I'll wait till it's an internal stretch.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
What's coming?
Okay. Seeing no more public comments, then I think that is the extent of our discussion of high school options for this meeting. I encourage others, if you want to have a dialogue, you need to have a specific agenda item, make a presentation or ask a question, and then we can have a dialogue. Next item on the agenda is video recording of district board meetings. And at the last meeting, the board asked Superintendent Smith to do some research and to show us what the options were and if you're comfortable doing that and making a recommendation for us.
So, up on the screen are some quotes. County Office of Eds got back to us, said they're not available to do it. The rest of the quotes are pretty expensive. My recommendation to the board would be not to do it.
Is the county office ever, or just for that particular meeting that we were asking?
They said they were not available for monthly meetings.
Okay.
Okay. Are there comments or questions from the board?
The only thing that I, because I had mixed feelings about this. Initially said, no way. And then after, I think I listened to you and just some of the people that... I feel like maybe it might be worth doing when we have special board meetings. Like, when we have the attorneys here, I think that would have been worthwhile to spend the money. Average board meetings, I think it's a waste of money. But definitely, when there's, there's something being disseminated that's, you know, special or more important than just our average daily business. I feel like what we're doing, what Hannah does, and the packets available and online, I feel like that's enough. But maybe with a special board meeting, I think it would be worthwhile.
I did call San Luis Coastal today and talk to Kim Holmes. They pay six fifty a meeting, they meet twice a month. I mean, granted, they're much larger than we are. But it's interesting, they use AGP video in Morro Bay too, so the price is different. But I do appreciate, part of my wanting to video is the minutes weren't really reflective of our meetings, but the last minutes, I think, were. It still doesn't stop people from recording. I mean, I'm still recording, you know, but it's not, it's not a district thing. And what I liked about the other things is they put it on their channel twenty-one.
Are you getting any requests from the public for that?
They can't. This is, this is not a district device.
So, this is just for your personal use?
Yes.
I'm just wondering how many of the, like, if it's a public thing, then maybe it's a different...
Well, I liked Val's idea, get a kid to do it. You know, I mean, we could buy the equipment. I mean, we've got phenomenal teachers and kids here. I mean, have the kids do it and then ask the county here. I don't know what the fee would be, maybe cheaper to say, here, here it is. Put it on twenty-one. You know, but, but I agree with you, at that rate, for every month would get kind of costly. But I do think it should be for, you know...
Okay, so, my, my sense of the board is that we will not pursue for regular board meetings. And if somebody wants to suggest that we record it for special board meetings, then we can talk about it. We now have a good foundation to use to make decisions. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is procedure and scope of meeting minutes. And this is something a member friend raised. So, if you would like to introduce the subject, please.
Oh, I just, the, as I've said, the minutes for the last two meetings, I think were well done. But before, when it just said, for instance, Joe Blow spoke, that wasn't good enough. You know, and so, I asked for, and I agree with Mr. Wright when he said, I didn't want a transcript. I'm not asking for a transcript of it, but you want to know the flavor of what's in there. So, the minutes shall reflect the names of the individuals who comment during the meeting's public comment period, as well as the topics they address. So, I think the way it was done this last time, more followed our board bylaws than before. So, if they, if they can continue to be like they just were, I'm okay with that. I did have one question, though. On the website, we can, people can only access minutes in board packets since we've been on Agenda Online. And I would like to know how to access the packets previous to Agenda Online. In the past years, there used to be folders. I would like those back. So, people are doing research, they can find them. I hear yawning out there.
You hear yawning.
So, Hannah and I have talked about posting the ones from two thousand and fifteen. If the board, we have all of them available on the office on request, but if the board wants more postings, we can look into that. But it's a significant amount of office work and will take some time.
No, I'm okay. If I, if people can come look at them in the office, that's fine too. Like, that's, as long as they're accessible. But as far as the minutes, as long as they still remain similar to the last two, I'm good. I want to be able to read the minutes or somebody who's not here to get a flavor of the meeting, not just a number of people that they spoke, spoken supportive, opposed to, whatever.
Okay, so, Mr. Wilson, I don't know about going further than that, but the comment I get from a lot of people is, on Agenda Online, the procedure to get to the agenda and the attachments is really difficult. And other, other boards have just one PDF you access and it's got, you know, Coast has ones that are, you know, it would be the same as if we took every item here and every attachment and just put them nose to tail. And it may be a hundred and sixty pages, but it's a single PDF.
Hundred ninety-one, I just did it today for this one.
I'm average, two hundred. Whatever it is, is somebody can just go to that on the front of our website and get the thing there. Because when they go through and have to go Agenda Online and know to go through the different steps to access it there, it's difficult. And it's more difficult than it needs to be.
It's true.
And, and our whole idea is we want as many people to have the information as possible, as easy as possible. So, that's the point I'd like to see.
I'll make one comment on that because I've tried to find things in the post minutes. And when, even though they have a little summary at the beginning of it, the fact is that the form of their PDF document is such that you can't search it for particular words. If you want to be able to search it, you have to download it. You have to scan it and do OCR so that you can search it. And I, paging through a hundred and ninety-page document isn't very useful for me.
Well, I think it's actually intentional. They take it and they scan it. They take the newspapers and then scan them. So, you can't do that. So, but if you take a PDF, like you were talking about, Carrie, if you take, what, how many PDFs do we have tonight? Quite a few. You can put them nose to tail and then you can use that feature of, of looking for specific things. It's, it's really easy to do. I mean, and nobody needs a special reader. You can do that. I think, personally, I think they do that intentionally. So, you can't find things within it. So, again, it's like taking all our PDFs and just putting them... again, it's like taking all our PDFs and just putting them by number, they would actually come up in the proper order. And having the agenda, the agenda as the first thing with the similar numbers, you could I'd search stuff online all the time.
Just for information, if you want to check it, our copy of Agenda Online has the 60-page auditorium report in it, and you can't scan that.
Because we're getting way beyond this agenda item.
Well, but it's talking about alternatives.
Right. So, but do they provide a PDF to us of the document?
I don't think so.
They do? So I mean, again, if you're talking about size, that could be a separate attachment, that someone could go to that one document if it was a download issue. I'm just saying that we could make it easier. After somebody reads this a couple times, either they're going to not want to do it, or they're going to know how to go specifically to the piece of information. And during a board meeting, you could ask, well, how do I find what the what the capital expenditures are, or what the developer fees we have, and what we've spent. You could find those things if it's a PDF, or you could ask the question, "Are you going to follow up?" I think that helps us better inform.
So my suggestion is, right now, I haven't heard anyone speak against continuing to record the minutes in the format with which they're currently being recorded, so I assume that that's okay with everyone. Better access to those minutes is a new topic. I'll ask Superintendent Smith to take a look at that, and it isn't easy to negotiate your way through Agenda Online. If you want to consider some alternatives and let us know what you consider, I'd appreciate it.
Scott, I'd be happy to show you how I did it and put them all together. We can still do that, and I have OCR, I can do that way too.
Yeah, I just, everyone needs to understand, working Agenda Online is a lot of work. And by the time Agenda Online is done, I don't want to put more work on Hannah's desk, frankly. And it is transparent, it's there posted publicly, it meets all the legal requirements. I don't know why we would want to double down and put more work on her desk. But if the board feels strongly about this, I will look into other options first.
Let's instead educate the public and do it.
My recommendation to do so. Okay, that's an appropriate comment, thank you. Anything else?
Yes, we have Eileen is a public comment.
On?
Yes, on this.
8.6?
Yes.
Okay.
I think no apparent in residence here, and I wanted to comment on the minutes. I really appreciated the level of detail that was included from the last meeting, and I think it's really helpful, especially when you're looking back. The minutes are what we have to go by on what actually transpired in the meetings, and I encourage you to continue with that level of detail of the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item 8.7, board member written communications with the public. Superintendent Smith.
So I just wrote up a few best practices and advice regarding board member communications with the public. Just to make sure everyone is clear that when you're doing district business, the preferred use is your school email. When stating individual opinions, it's best to use a disclaimer. And I received legal advice on number three. I know there's varying opinions on this, but once you're elected, you are a board trustee. That is who you are. So whether or not you use your title does not necessarily mean you're representing the board, because that's just simply who you are once you're elected. And then also, I want everyone to be clear that use of your personal email to do district business makes your personal email open to public records requests. So those are just some clarifying points for board trustees, and that's all I have, and if people have questions about it.
I do. As far as, just clarification, when school emails use, it's district business. So that would imply, then, when school email is included in the body of an email, that email is school business. Yes or no?
School email is included in the body of an email.
Okay, so for example, Ron sends an email from Ron Wilson Design, private email. Within the email says, "I'm your elected representative, signs off, Ron Wilson, Cayuga trustee, rwilson@cayugaschool.org." So within the body of his email, he states the school email. So is that now school business or not?
Depends.
Well, see, what's school business then? If you're not, if you're not representing the school as a school trustee, then don't say it. As much as I don't like Wilson's or Ron's email, if he had just said what he did without saying, "I'm a trustee and you're elected representative," he has every right to send that email to whoever he wants to. But to me, it seems like as soon as he crosses the line, "I'm your elected official," signs it as a trustee, and puts that email in the body of the email message, doesn't, I need a yes or no, doesn't that make it district business?
I refer you back to number three, then. It does not make it district business using your title.
But then, if you're not representing the board, then why would you state it?
Once you are elected, that is who you are, it is simply your title.
It's like Mr. or Mrs. If you, once you're married, you're Mrs., then if you went by your district name, I mean, it's kind of an option.
Make an observation.
Certainly.
If I get an email from Senator Mauney or Assemblyman Cunningham, they both give me their ideas about whatever it is they're talking about. They sign with their office, they say, "That's who I am." And I don't take that as a statement of policy on behalf of the Assembly or the Senate of the State of California. It's an individual who uses their title to communicate with a constituent, to tell them what their thoughts are. And I think the same thing, the same logic applies to school board members.
Okay, well, then you look at number one. District email use is preferred in doing district business, parentheses, cayugaschool.org. To me, that's saying, once you reference cayugaschool.org, that is district business. True or false?
I'm not comfortable with your true or false questions, first off. Second, I think number one is pretty clear, that my recommendation would be to use your district email.
I understand that, but if you're referencing your district email when it says, "When doing district business," then what is district business?
And that is where we have to rely on attorney, because it depends on the situation, depends on what's in the body of the email. Many factors that go into how an attorney would determine what is considered district business and what is not.
Right, so if we're going to continue to get these public records requests that are costly and time-consuming, this could all be avoided if, to me, district business, when you say cayugaschool.org, that now makes it district business.
Absolutely. Everything in our email system would be considered district business because it's our email system. Whether you're talking about going to lunch, or you're talking about what's happening on the next board agenda, it is district business once it's in our email system.
Mr. Wilson.
It seems to me that the only way I could send emails is either through my personal or the school's email. I did it specifically through my personal, but people communicate with board members and with staff, Scott, and myself through our school emails. So and encouraging people to contact their board members or other elected officials, and using the word, "I urge you," seems to be pretty clear I'm not speaking for the board. So by the rationale I'm hearing, no board member could send an email to any constituent, and as Carrie's pointed out, that's not the real world. I get lots of emails from both sides of the aisle telling me their positions, urging me to contact other elected officials, and they give me, they put emails, email addresses on there. This is part of the political process. And we don't have special rules for school boards that exempt us, or take those rights away from us, so lacking something that says that specifically, I don't even understand this conversation. Thank you.
I agree with you on one.
Give a few of our remarks. Susan, give a comment.
I just think, given the nature of all that I've learned in the last year, what if, and also, in a spirit of trying to eliminate public information requests, and time, and money, and et cetera, I'm just curious if the community would be comfortable if Mr. Wilson would say, in the body of his whatever he's communicating, "I am speaking as an individual board member." And my, just what it says in here in number two, is there a way for him to communicate freely with whatever avenue he, you know, because it could get very confusing for you, you know, you're getting one from in one side, and then it's being responded to another one, and how to communicate, but if he had that in the body of whatever, would that appease the people that are upset with the way you're communicating? And stop the requests for all of the communications? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there in an effort to relieve the administrative, the people in administration here of these requests. They're time-consuming, and there's other things going on here.
There are.
Mr. Wright?
I'm concerned with the implications of a person speaking with his concerns and his opinions. I think that we're at a point where we're trying to restrict that for some reason or another, and I don't quite understand that. I think if you're stating you're a board member and you have an opinion, and you're not speaking for other board members, it should be plain and simple. And as long as you state that, it's fine. You're not speaking for the board, you're speaking for yourself, and I don't think it needs to be anything more than that.
I don't disagree with you.
Good.
However, but, that's not what's in this email. The, it's, when you say, if I had already said, if this email was sent without the bottom saying, "Cayuga School Board Trustee," and him putting his email there, that would be fine. Because, going back to October of 16, "School emails indicate an established relationship with school" in emails. If you look at the top of this email, obviously, he blind copied other people. He sent it from home to his school email. That already, because it uses his Cayuga school, it's in our pipeline. You shouldn't have to go talk to Randy about if that's a public... From what I'm hearing, because it went through our school, it's now a public record. If Ron, if you want to communicate with people, fine, but don't use, I'm saying, I don't like the fact that you're saying you're a trustee and putting your school email. The school email indicates a relationship with the school.
I have a relationship with the school, and it's implicit, but in the future emails where I express my opinion, which I will continue to do, is I will put a larger disclaimer, but to say that, when you say, "I am your representative and I urge you to contact other board members," obviously, I'm not speaking for those other board members. I'm urging my constituents, our constituents, to contact other board members. And again, I will use my title to do that, and I just there's, because both our school emails and our, and if I use my private email, basically, what I'm hearing is, I can't use my school email because that's me representing the board, and I can't use my private email because that's school business and I'm representing the board. I'm not doing that. And I chose to do my private email, hopefully, to get around this, but giving a reference back to other board members or myself through the school email, again, I am not using any kind of method to say that this isn't a what's the phrase, a public, I mean, a school business. I'm just waiting for clarification on the scope and the extent of this, and I hope we'll have that soon, but if you can't, if you can't use one or the other, how do you communicate with your constituents?
Add number two. Just add number two. "I am speaking as an individual..."
I will, and I said, I will make it more explicit. In this, it's, it's, to me, it's explicit because I'm not saying, I'm
But it's not, the other people are obviously...
Well, I, that's preface of logic, but anyway, but going forward, we can't go back. Going forward, I will, you know, we'll all, we'll all use the same disclaimer, okay?
Yeah, I have something about that too. We should all just have that behind our name, and, you know? If it becomes an issue, because if, well, whatever. It's becoming an issue with our administration. It's an issue.
But it won't, the other part of it is, is it doesn't stop people from making public document requests. I mean, no matter what you write...
Has that happened in the past?
There have been a few things way back when where people wanted information, to the extent of asking for every email that somebody referenced, or a year, or whatever, is a new
Excessive.
High, low?
Yeah.
So, so, and again, it's within certain rights, obviously, of transparency, but, you know, I, one part, I'm waiting to hear on, is if I'm the recipient of an email that I didn't generate, I didn't write, and somebody copies me, either a board member, or a staff member, or a member of the public, and my name's on it, and your names are on it, and that then makes it a public document that allows every email to be looked at. I don't understand that. I can't, I can't do anything about that. And that just, you know, it just keeps this, it perpetuates this if people want to perpetuate it, so I'm willing, I'm going to be responsible for the things I write, you know, and we'll hear about it.
This was just meant to be some advice on in general for everyone, and best practices is all this was meant to be. I have put in the mail today to you the legal opinion to help you respond to that public records request. I don't believe this item was meant to be a discussion of an individual public records request.
Great. So I want to make one, two points, actually. One is that the title on the document is "Board Member Communications with the Public." The title on the agenda is "Board Member Written Communications with the Public." And I think that this is the correct title. The title that's on the document is the correct title, because this applies to written and verbal communications. The other thing, I appreciate Mr. Wilson's most recent comment. The other thing I, I appreciate, Mr. Wilson's most recent comment. We talked earlier on the correspondence. We had an example where Lila Coleman had sent you an email at your home address and you forwarded it to.
To Scott.
To Scott so that it, because it was board business, that was, well, it was, I'm sorry, a communication that it was appropriate to make official board business. And I think that that's what one has to do. I think that's perfectly appropriate.
I don't.
And I tend to agree with you that when, but I, again, I'm certainly not a lawyer. If, when you receive a document from somebody or communication from somebody, I don't know how that makes it a public record. When you forward it, when you comment on it to somebody else, if it's school district business, then it can become a public record. So the communication from Ms. Coleman became a public record. And I think that's perfectly appropriate.
Well, because it was added to our, our minutes.
Right.
And again, I put the hopeful, you know, I hope that people would contact each of the board members directly or just, oh, actually, I think I put just to Scott. I didn't put all your, your school emails on there, that Scott would include it in the record. And, and she just replied straight away. So I'm just taking the information from a constituent and passing it along so it, as she intended it to be. So again, I think, you know, this is a hypothesis. So anyway, I think we have good guidelines here.
Okay. Is, is there further comment or question?
I emphatically disagree with number three. And we have two public comments on this item. I want to qualify that. I disagree with number three in a personal email. So Carrie McDonald and Eileen Roach are the two to for public comment on this item.
Okay.
I have quite a few things to say, but most of them have been covered. And, and Superintendent Smith does under your board bylaws, which are actually really clear and they're on your website. I'm trying to hear why they're being reinterpreted. So they're really clear. I didn't, I don't know why, I, I don't know that the board, I don't think the bylaws are the problem here. I, I can, I'm gonna make a suggestion to trustee Wilson. And it's, and it's pretty easy since he does like to communicate. I'm not going to put your constituents, Scott, because I thought we're all constituents. But we have, apparently we have your own. It's really simple on the letter of your communication, communication site. Although I am a board member, I am contacting you as a private citizen.
I'm not a private citizen.
You aren't?
I'm a private citizen.
You're acknowledging that you're a board member, which you're entitled to do. But you're saying that you're contacting them at your own, as your, as your own personal, you have your own personal viewpoint. When you start, no, I'm being serious. When you start saying, "I'm a board member," there are many people that go, "Oh, he's speaking on account of the board." Can't get away from that. As much, you're saying you're not a private citizen. So if your whole demeanor and aura and your title is a board member, then everything you say is going to be constructed that way unless you do do a disclaimer. And that's in your board bylaws. You guys have them here. It's, they're easy to read. So you're spending an awful lot of time to try to accommodate behavior that's causing you problems. So I am suggesting you stick with your very clear board bylaws and just, you know, okay, I'm just going, you know what? There isn't any enforcement. There's no repercussions. There's no consequences. So this is just an exercise. I know you like to do things the right way, but I don't see any consequences to any of this. So I'm just curious why more time is needed.
Would you, Carrie, would you share the number of the board bylaws with us? We have lots of them.
Okay. You do have a lot. Okay. We've got nine zero one zero, public statements. We have board policy, I guess it's a policy, BP one one zero zero, communication with the public. And I love this part. I underlined it because I was gonna say something about, Superintendent Smith does have, he is to distribute the communications protocols and procedures. But the bottom line says, and the importance of presenting a consistent, unified message on district issues. It's right here. The other one that I had brought up was board bylaw ninety-two hundred. It is a board member authority. They're, they're here. I think there's CFPA board policies, which might, pretty tried true and, I don't know, weather play. I think they know what they're doing.
I can add to that. There's ninety-ten.
So, and ninety-ten, oh, did I say that? Ninety-ten, eleven hundred, and.
Ninety-twelve.
And that is not, so she says this.
All right. Thank you for the minutes.
And she does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen Roach, I wanted to mention that this issue has been occurring for years. Ron Wilson has been sending emails from his private email account under the guys that I'm just communicating with the public. And, but, but never stating that he's doing that as a private citizen in his emails. And we've brought that to the board's attention several times through the communication side. And the board has not done anything. And last time I brought it up, one member of the board said, "I can't enforce anything." And another member said, "I'm just transparent." It's up to you guys to enforce this. I think you should be appalled that a board member is not only not supporting an amendment or a resolution that you all voted on, but that he is representing the board when he's sending these emails on the guise of, "I'm just a private citizen," but never actually saying that. And that is why I filed a public records request. And any email that you send from your private account regarding school business is always public information, is my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's the end of the session on item eight point seven. And I'm going to declare that we're gonna take a ten-minute break. A three and a minute break.